So let's go ahead and start the meeting. First thing is, uh, say the pledge of allegiance. It's tomorrow night. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which you stand, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all. The next discussion will be the board calendar. Did we bring this up for a reason? Uh, we gotta take some off, delete something, or what are we doing with this?
This is something that we bring here for every board work session just for review.
I'm sorry, what was that?
This is something that we place on the agenda, the board work session agenda every month for review.
Okay, okay. Any comments, uh, concerns, uh, need changes on, on the board calendar?
Um, I guess the only thing, only comment I have is, um, it was just nice to see those items that we talked about in our Saturday board retreat, um, those items added to the calendar. Um, so that was really nice to see that, um, put in there.
And certainly if there are adjustments to be made, uh, as the year progresses, uh, we can make those, uh, changes, uh, on the fly. So, uh, this is a tentative plan. Uh, I, I like the plan and it reflects the conversation that we had, uh, as you said, Melissa.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the first reading of board policies. Any comments? Any concerns, anything we need to address? It's just the first reading. You will be to get a chance to read, to go over it again.
None from me, Stanley. Good questions. George, I think.
Yeah, I don't have any further questions or follow-ups. Um, thank you to, um, for all the detailed information that you got on my questions. Some of it came from, um, my own personal experience in my work. Um, so I was quite interested in the whole drug testing and, and that particular issue. So, so thank you for that wonderful, um, feedback and the detailed information on, on all.
I'd like to remind the board that if there are any questions that you may have, certainly bring them up during our weekly meetings and we can address those as well at that time.
Like I say, it's the first meeting, we'll be able to, to go over this again. Hearing no other questions, we're gonna move on to the most important part of the agenda, return to school.
Yes, uh, thank you, Stanley. The, um, we have a, a number of voices that are present this evening. Probably the greatest number of, uh, members of the administrative team that you'll see, uh, the entire year. And it gives us an opportunity to, uh, share the successes and the hard work that has taken place over the last several months. And, uh, we've all been very skittish, nervous, anxious, uh, and hoping for the best. And we've had two very good meetings and getting through some information about how the first two days have gone. Of course, uh, we will use this information as a comparison, uh, when we reconvene on the seventeenth of the month for our regular board meeting where we'll provide you a complete update on the status of our enrollment and our remote learning program as well. So, uh, since we have so many people that will be speaking tonight, I will, uh, stop my comments at this time and we'll first hear from Lynn Rosalini.
You're muted, Lynn.
Hello, Lynn.
It should be on now.
Yes.
I do know people who ask me and we have a hard time hearing you. So wave a hand if, if I, uh, you can't hear me. And I, I do wanna say good evening and I'm so glad to be here. This opening of school year has been unlike any I have ever experienced and I'm sure that's true for, for everyone. For students and families, uh, and all of our staff. And although it has been different, I think there's a lot to acknowledge and recognize. And first, I just wanna give a shout out to our principals and our central office staff, uh, and, and our, our teachers. They have been working so long and so hard. Our principals have been working hard to balance classes, they've been reaching out to parents and helping with the staff. And, uh, they really deserve a lion's share of the credit, uh, being something they've never done before for a startup school. So I wanna thank them. And our central office staff has been working hard. Our HR and ERO staff have a big warning curve to learn how to deal with all the ins and outs and global inflation laws and the current concerns around COVID. So hopefully we recognize, defend, and I really do appreciate them. So with that, I'm gonna get down to some numbers and some information for you. Does anybody here know exactly how many employments we have in the Ording School District besides Marcy Bannon? Okay, well, we have a hundred and sixty-seven certificated teachers. That includes our administrators and our superintendent who is certified. We have a hundred and fifty-one classified staff and that includes our non-represented people like a Marcy Bannon or a, or a cat. Uh, in addition to that, we have over thirty coaches and of those coaches, twenty-five work within the district. We also have certificated teachers, substitute force, and fifty-one classified staff. In addition to that, we sometimes have seasonal people. So our total employment for a year is, uh, four hundred and twenty-seven individuals. That's a lot of people working together to make a big difference for students in our community. Right now, we have no blueprint, no mandatory position that we choose and plan to, uh, fill at this time. And we did know several, but we were concerned about the accuracy of our projection during the pandemic. Uh, so at this point, staffing is stable, uh, in terms of open coaching. Right now, our principal who's been mentioned has been down through athletes from our, uh, online to our academy. At the elementary, we have five point two FTE who are supporting the online academy. Middle school has four FTE. And currently, we have one point four FTE at the high school. You know, our people, uh, law, the legislation are providing relief for families and individuals who are impacted by the COVID virus. We have staff members right now who, uh, have submitted waivers asking to be excluded from COVID teaching. And at, just at this point, we have only seven staff members who have committed, uh, or excuse me, submitted paperwork for us. We have heard from others. I expect that number to grow as we move closer to in-person learning and, you know, keep you posted on those numbers. Each of those applications has to be dealt with individually. And we are looking at what the best matches for them. How do they fit under the law? What are the leave requirements and, and benefits they can access? And then how will we fill or provide the service that they shouldn't be doing if they were able? And so, we've got our hands full. I think the hope is going to increase. Meanwhile, as we, we do that work, we are partnering with our contacts and agencies like labor industries, uh, uh, workers compensation, so that ensure that we have the best and latest information. So we're busy, uh, but we're busy for a good reason because we've got our kids back and engaged and we're really excited to be here. So thank you. Any question?
Lynn, would you be able to share those numbers electronically with us?
Uh, yes, as a matter of fact, I've already given them to Bonnie and so she can do that for you.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Now, Tony, you're muted.
You're muted, Tony.
Tony, you're muted.
Uh, each of the cabinet members that are presenting this evening, uh, have notes that they will be providing to Bonnie. So board members do not need to write down any notes. Uh, Bonnie will do a great job of providing those in the minutes of our meeting tonight. So, uh, we thought about that and that. So best assured, we'll have an accurate, uh, display that's presented to you and then you'll be able to make comparisons, uh, with the numbers that you hear tonight with what you'll hear, uh, on the seventeenth at a regular board meeting.
So if I, I suppose I'm next, right? Okay. Hi, um, thank you. Thank you for having me, uh, talk a little bit tonight about, uh, student support services and all the things that we get going on there. And so what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about next week. Um, so I've presented my special ed plan to the board in previous meetings. Um, and for those of you who remember, we have basically a, a rolling, a rolling, um, uh, plan for bringing our students' highest need back into the school district face to face. Um, starting with September eighth, um, which is next Tuesday. Um, and remember those students are, in so few, in regards to a definition, those are the students who require intensive educational supports, who have not accessed or cannot access aids and services, were impacted by the loss of in-person services and are not equitably served, um, in a remote environment. And so we have twenty-nine students who are starting school next week on site, um, in a combination of hybrid and also full, in, full service Monday through Thursday because Friday is when we clean our buildings. Um, we have twenty-nine students starting next week, including our students who will be returning to school outside the school district. Starting on September twenty-first, um, we'll have another group of students, next highest need, who will also be remote and, um, in, in person. And those are the kids who require intensive educational supports, um, but also who have not accessed aids and services, um, and basically related back to, um, the spring of last year.
Chris, sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, when you say in-person, basically in-person education outside of the, our district buildings, that means it's happening in their home or is there a third location?
Right. So in regards to what I'm talking about, um, at home, so we got, right now, we have at-home services.
Yep.
Um, starting next week, at-home services, in-school services, and also out-of-district services at specialty schools.
Got it. Thank you.
So starting September twenty-first is the next wave of students, um, approximately one hundred to two hundred students at different times of the week, um, coming in, uh, to our buildings in a hybrid methodology. Um, and then, uh, starting October fifth, another wave of students, uh, coming in. Uh, we'll know the numbers of those particular within the next week because we have to provide transportation and we need to know within the next seven to ten days, um, regarding the transportation piece. Are there any? So that's basically the plan that I presented three weeks ago. We've maintained that plan. Um, and it's really a good picture of what it's going to look like, uh, when we start bringing our students back, um, in a smaller group of students. I'll be really honest with you, um, I've never worked harder for twenty-nine students in my career. Um, and, uh, thinking about bringing back half of the school district, A-B, um, is, it's going to be a lot of work for the task force and the people on the ground. Um, you know, from all the things related to safety, uh, to logistics, uh, to where the students are going to be learning so that we maintain groups of five or less, um, so that we're social distancing, uh, so that people have the, um, uh, PPE that they need, uh, and making sure that everyone is screened prior to coming into our buildings. Um, those particular things are complex. Um, and also, um, working with families because we have families, um, who are concerned. They want their kids to go to school, um, but they're also concerned about their children. And then you also have staff who feel much the same way. And so we're, we're in a position where, um, right now, this is a really good test, uh, for our system, uh, regarding, uh, regarding bringing our students back. Um, also, we'll be utilizing five of our buses, five of our buses to bring the students to school. We do utilizing two bus drivers for each bus. One person will be screening the students as they walk onto the bus. One will obviously be driving. Um, and, um, we have two vans that are going out to the outside school, outside of district, um, placements. So we have two vans and then we also have four buses who will be delivering lunches, um, out and about in our community. Um, the students, uh, will be served, uh, by, basically seven, we have four certified staff, uh, at Ording, uh, five at Carmigan Ridge, Ording Middle School has four, Ording High, High School has five certified staff. And we have seven point eight, seven point eight itinerants serving the students who are coming on board. During this time, uh, one of the things that are gonna be occurring is the fact that we've, uh, regarding students who have been enrolled in special ed this year, one of the things that Tony wanted me to share with you, um, is enrollment for our special education students. Last year at this time, we had four hundred and twenty-seven students. Uh, this year, starting off the school year, we have three hundred and ninety-two. A net loss of whatever that is between four twenty-seven and three ninety-two. I wasn't a good math whiz, but anyway. Um, those, that, those are the numbers. However, since that point, um, that I grabbed those numbers, um, what I'd let you know is that those numbers are slowly but surely increasing. So I'm confident that we're gonna come closer to that four hundred and twenty-seven. Tony also will like, would like me to talk a little bit about how many trans, uh, choice transfers there were, are as at this point. Um, right now, um, we've had a total of fifty students waiver into the school district, um, which is up by nine students from the previous school district, previous year. This year, we have not rejected any students wanting to waive into the Ording School District. So we're up by nine. Um, and then releases, as of last week, um, we've released, uh, two hundred and eighty-nine students, um, which is down from last year, um, but we have thirty pending. So as of last week, um, we're still in regards to choi- choice transfer requests, we're still a little under a hundred students less than last year, which is good news for enrollment. Um, and then we've had so far this year, um, and I'm talking about last week. A lot of things have changed since last week. Um, seventy-eight students have filed for an intent to homeschool. Um, last thing is around school, student and staff safety. Uh, one of the things that we did is each of the buildings, uh, created a safety plan for all of their buildings. Um, those plans describe how we're gonna maintain those social distancing requirements. Uh, maintain good hygiene such as frequent hand washing. As you're gonna see in our buildings, we have hand washing stations everywhere. Um, uh, we also have a protocol for cleaning and disinfecting all of our classrooms. Um, we've provided our staff with PPE guidance. Uh, we've also have our health screenings throughout the stations each week, each day actually, each day. And we've also, um, working on our sick employee and student practices and regarding, um, some of those things. And so one of the things, if we have a sick employee, there is a quarantine room identified in each building. We also have a emergency response plan related to exposure response. And we've also provided the first day of, first day of school, is it first day? No. During the three days last, three days last week, we also did employee training regarding what the protocols are for, um, uh, attestations, uh, the use of, um, face masks, uh, hand cleaning, believe it or not, um, and what they do if they, um, have, uh, any symptoms related to COVID nineteen. So I kinda went all over the page with this. Um, are there any questions about special ed, enrollment, and safety?
I have one comment and, um, first, I am, I'm so impressed with the work that you've done to get, um, our students back into the school, um, our special ed students to continue their education. My thought, as you were describing the number of students that will be coming into the building, I recognize that we're maintaining all of the social distancing protocols. Um, my thought was optics. I, we love that word, but optics from the community, we have the, the benefit, I think, of having our schools right in the middle of town. Because the community starts to see buses roll in and children walking into the buildings. I would love for our community to understand, you know, the lengths that we're going through to protect the students and to make sure we provide an equitable education for them. So Tony, maybe on the communication side, if we could put something out to explain to all these families who want their children back in the buildings, why are these other kids doing it? Some kind of information out to the community.
You're muted, Tony.
I certainly will do that. Uh, I think that, uh, we want to, um, um, be sure to let our community members know that we are not unique, that thank goodness all the school districts around the state of Washington are providing special attention and care and support to special education population. Thank goodness. Only in America does this happen. And I'm very proud of the fact that we are offering these services on a limited basis to those that need it very much. So I'm happy to do that.
Great, thank you.
The other thing is, is that since we're a small community, a lot of those families, my own, are, lots of people know us and so they haven't got a problem with asking us, talking to us about it. And so, um, I, I, I will, I think it's good if we remind the parents to be advocates too as to why, why for them and not for others, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I saw a couple of parents today and they wanted to give me a hug and I said, um, no, 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 um, I'll, I'll take you up on that later. And so, but anyway, um, it was very good.
Covid, covid.
So I said, oh, thanks, I'm not, I'm not right now.
Well, I'll, I'll give you a, a JJ artwork, uh, okay?
Oh, yeah. And I know what those look like. He's a good art, he's an artist.
Yes.
So Chris, you mentioned enrollments. Do we have a, a view against what we budgeted so far?
I think Marcy Bannon would be able to talk about that particular piece.
Oh, wait apart, nice.
I know, but I also don't wanna give the wrong answer.
And that will come up in her, uh, when she have her time. So we'll, we'll.
That's great. Thank you.
Next up, Marcy.
Oh, so my part, yay. Okay, so my department has been working really, really hard on a lot of different things, learning, um, learning new rules, the S, uh, there's so many things, I'm not even gonna list them all. Everyone in our district is slammed. Everyone's busy. Um, I'll get to my numbers. So as you know, from the last board meeting, um, we budgeted two thousand six hundred and sixty-five kids in our district. That includes twenty-six thirteen, that was K five, K twelve, and then about fifty-two running start kids. As of today, and I, you have to take this number with a grain of salt and I'm gonna give you some reason why. But as of today, our current number is down two hundred and twenty-six point four-two from that figure. And some of the contributing factors because of that, um, could be lowering it artificially, um, but there's a lot of reasons. One, it's only the second day of school. It is before Labor Day. Um, traditionally, in most districts I've lived in and worked in, mostly worked in, I've only lived really in this one, um, if you start before Labor Day, you have a lower count before Labor Day. It's, it's one of those weird things. It's great to start, but your enrollment's lower before that. Um, September enrollment is always lower than October enrollment. Uh, we still have, with this, with the great job that our families and our parents and our staff have done, we still have kids unrolling, unenrolling and enrolling every day. We have kids that are changing from A to B and back again, depending on what they feel like that day. Um, we have kindergarten that doesn't even start until the eighth, so we don't know for a fact those numbers are good or not. And then running start numbers, which were budgeted fifty-two, doesn't start until closer to the end of September. So those numbers, I don't even know until, that, we don't even count those until October. The, the Pierce County College in Green River, we don't even start counting that until October. Um, I can say we had about, in our budget, we only budgeted for eight ALA kids and we're currently somewhere around two hundred and fifty-nine. So there's a definite switcheroo there. Um, some other things that, we also have a system configurations that are working behind our scenes that could be, um, when we compare the numbers I see to the numbers that I, I talked to Alicia today, I talked to Dave today, Cliff, we, our numbers don't exactly match. So we know there's some discrepancies there that we'll work on and we'll have them figured out before our final, final number that we report to the state. But there, but the, so the two twenty-six is down. Um, and then the next question, of course, is what does that mean financially? Well, financially, that is a decrease of about two point one, two point one billion dollars. Um, that number does change, um, because we also budgeted. So we get money, additional dollars for K-three class size and what we can prove our K-three kids to, um, teacher and music and PE teacher, the ratios. And we budgeted nineteen point seven eight, which is about our average in our district. Lowering that to seventeen, because right now I could say we have a great K-three class size ratio. They're pretty awesome. We're probably gonna get about an extra five hundred thousand just from lowering that from nineteen, a little, just under twenty to seventeen. So we could get more money there. So it's really hard for me to say what we are gonna lose because as you guys may or may not know, our enrollment isn't based on one month. It's based on our average FTE for every month from September through June. So having a low number in September doesn't mean that we're gonna be that low for the year because the money we get is based on our average FTE from September through June. So should our enrollment be down on September and maybe it's really high in January? Well, they average out to about the middle, but you've got September, October, November, December. You've got lots of different times in there. And before I go on to the next section, does anyone wanna talk, ask me any questions? And I didn't even go into sped numbers because honestly, until I heard Chris today, I didn't, I didn't do sped amounts or numbers. Um, I didn't do that, that dollar figure because it's, it's.
And, and we don't put in our final, final tally until next week. And so we'll know more next week regarding when we put in the P two-two-three-H, so.
Yep. And we'll know more.
Yeah, Marcy, I wanna, I, I, you know, I know there's two hundred and twenty-six that's down. And I completely appreciate your explanation about how those numbers are in so much flux. But coming into this year, knowing that we committed to a budget, my stomach within knots, wondering what the impact would be. And I'm actually feeling kinda good right now. I know things totally gonna change and it may print as the weeks go on, but, um, I just appreciate the work you've done to wrangle up those numbers and present a picture for us.
Yeah, and I, unfortunately, I just, I can't give you exacts right now. I can give you what could happen. I mean, really, our, so there's some numbers that go up and down based on our enrollment. We could end up getting more LEA per kid because we have lower numbers. And so it's kinda hard to say. Yes, our levy number is set, but our apportionment and our LEA change by our enrollment. So we may not end up, I mean, even if it was two point one million, I don't think it's gonna be two point one million. I think it's gonna be way less than that. So I'm not stressed yet about it because I know that as the year goes on and more kids come to school, our enrollment's gonna go up.
Yeah.
And we understand it's early in the year, so only the, the second day, so we appreciate what you're doing.
Good, cuz I'm stressed, I'm stressed over talking to you guys about it. So good, I'm glad you understand.
It's okay. We're gonna be okay.
It's okay. Is there any other questions about that part? Cuz then I'll go into a couple of other things. Okay. So the other part, um, you guys may have heard, oh, I'm sorry, did someone start talking? I didn't mean to talk over you. Okay. Um, so a couple of other new things that have happened recently, as you guys know, things are changing really fast in a lot of places in, within our district. So up until a couple of weeks ago, we didn't know exactly what we were gonna get for transportation funding for the year or how we could spend it or what was gonna happen. So I don't remember. So I don't remember exactly when it was, but I think it was in the last two weeks. Um, the state came out with an increased abilities to spend the money we get from transportation funding. It's a, it's a specific funding source that we get. It's based on ridership. We know our ridership part is gonna be lower, um, depending on our, that. But the ability to spend the money was the secondary issue. Because if you don't have, if you're getting the funds, but you can't spend it on the tasks that you're allowed to, um, that creates a different problem. So they increased the the ability to spend the dollars. So now, instead of just being able to spend them on two from school, we can also spend them on delivering lunches out to the community. We can spend it on on delivering devices or delivering homework or delivering packets. We can spend it on more things than we could in the past. The state is changing the um, the accounting rules to allow us to spend those funds, which is a program of fun, on more things. So that's, that's huge. Um, the other thing that changed much more recently, that that changed on Monday, is um, we can now, rather than having to serve serve and charge students, we're back to our spring, spring feeding of where it's grab and go. Um, and we can feed zero to eighteen age, doesn't matter, as long as they're zero to eighteen, we can feed them. We don't have to keep track of them the way we were going to have to. We're gonna have to treat um, anyone who picked up a lunch like they were getting a lunch from a school. We're gonna have to keep track of it. Were they free? Were they reduced? Did they have to pay? We're gonna have to keep track of every kid. The state, U S D H, it extended the waiver from the spring on Monday, so now we're giving out meals to everybody. We started off with a meal service at O M S daily from ten thirty to twelve thirty. Um, our first day, we had a hundred sixty-nine meals. We had people waiting. We didn't expect that many at all. Because um, yeah, we were, we were not expecting that many because we were going by the summer lunch program that happened in the city. And we found, we had heard that that was about forty per day, so a hundred sixty-nine was way more than we expected. That's okay, the ladies all adjusted. Um, today it was down to hundred and twenty-four, and that's okay, too. We have four locations being added as of Monday that Chris referenced that um, we're going to be serving during um, our non, mostly non synchronous learning times. So, no, I can never say it right. They're not synchronous learning times. So when the kids are not supposed to be in front of a computer, we're delivering from twelve to twelve fifteen at four more locations. So um, starting Tuesday, the, we'll have one going on to um, up to Prairie Ridge. We'll have one in Deer Park, we'll have one on one seventy-seventh, and one in Shenoka Estates on Patterson, up on Patterson. And so those are our most um, are, most of our areas. We started with them because we believe those are the most needy areas to make sure meals got to them. Um, what else? So other things, um. Oh, so we also got some extra funds. Um, you guys may have heard or not heard. Um, we got two chunks of money from this, from different angles of CARES funds from two different sources. So we had gotten a grant from the state. Um, we got the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that has to be spent by August of next year. And that's what they call E S R funds, which is element, it's an acronym, I'm not gonna go to, it's CARES money from the state. We can spend it on things like um, technology, P P E, training for employees on technology and supporting students further from educational justice. We also got a second chunk of money um, that we just got notified of last Friday um, from a amount given to us from Pierce County. So Pierce County also had some CARES funds. And they are dividing it up with all the school districts and private schools and I think some businesses in the area. And so that's, that set of money is about lower than ninety-five thousand, and it has to be spent before December thirtieth. And it's kinda generic. It's um, necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID nineteen that weren't included in budget. So it's pretty vague. Um, but I'm gonna read more into it and see that. So that, those were some nice things that have happened. Um, and then my department's been working hard, that's all I can say. They've, they've been killing it. Um, we're working on closing the year. Our fiscal year ended August thirty-first. So we're working on getting all the expenditures in the right year, getting things paid for, getting people paid, learning all the new rules of um, all the different kinds of leaves that we're gonna need to monitor and how we're gonna have to claim them on our taxes for the district uh, to get our credits, cuz they don't come any other way. So they're doing a hard job. Any other question?
I do have a question. First, a comment. Thank you, Marcy. I um, always learn a little bit more each time you speak it without fail. And um, I appreciate all your hard work. I can tell you're incredibly stressed out, but I thank you. Um, but one of the things, one of the documents that Tony had forwarded us in regards to transportation um, towards the end of that letter or document, all the good stuff was there, and then it was something about guaranteed funding. Um, and that the governor or whoever it was, um, that it wasn't. Can you explain guaranteed funding to me and how that might or might not affect this?
Yeah, and so what that is, is so we get, the transportation funding is the worst, the hardest to explain. And I believe I, the last I heard, there's four people in the state that can actually explain the way that transportation is funding. I'm not one of those four, so I'll give you the generalities of the way I understand it. Um, there's a whole bunch of um, different formulas in a, in the s- system called STARS. Some of the things that are part of that formula are our ridership, which means three times a year, we keep track of how many kids are on the bus. And that determines parts of our funding. Another part of our funding is determined by our expenditures from the previous year. Another part is our efficiency rating, which means how full do we get our buses? How efficient is our transportation department? So those are the factors that go into our funding for this year. Well, two of the ridership dates um, were last year, so we're kind, we're okay on those ones. But our, our fall date, we may not have much ridership. So our transportation funding is probably going to be decreased a bit because of that ridership um, that we're not getting to do. So we don't know exactly what that decrease is. Um, we also know, we do know that um, there's been a lot of talk trying to get legislatures when they come back into session, which what, January, I think I heard last? Um, that they may, they, they may try to make the for, the funding formula more explanatory so everyone, and everyone can figure out how it's actually working. I know the bits and pieces, but exactly how those pieces work together and which percentages are responsible for which part of it, I couldn't tell you.
Thank you. I actually tried to do a Google dive on that formula and threw my hands up and just said, I'm just gonna ask Marcy. But I appreciate it. Um, I was just a little confused as to kind of what that would mean. Um, but you explained it well enough for me to understand, so thank you so much.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, not that we want kids to come back earlier, we don't, but the more kids we can get on a bus at the ridership window, the better that that, that number will be, really, is the way that works.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're muted again, Tony. Tony, you're muted again.
Steve, as you know, we're at six forty-one and and there may be a need to speed up the uh, various presentations. But you have some very important uh, information and in, individual voices to uh, present to the board as well. So we're gonna try to stay to that seven o'clock uh, ending time. Thank you, Steve.
All right, I'll try to jump in here really quick. And I just wanna say upfront that if for some uh, point during my introduction, I actually slap myself, I don't want you to be alarmed. Uh, there's this combination of things that happens to me when I'm dealing with fatigue uh, during hard times and inspiration from courageous people. So with that, um, as you get ready to hear from our building leaders, I, I just kinda wanted to paint a little bit of a picture for you. There's a saying that goes, you can't lead what you don't know. And I've believed this for years, and I've actually stated it as a truth. Uh, incumbent in this statement is that effective leadership is supported by both deep understanding and thorough preparation. If that were really an undisputed truth, we'd be in a real mess right now. What I've witnessed over the last several weeks is really effective leadership without the benefit of having either deep understanding or the time for the kind of preparation that we're used to. Having spent July, building a framework for a hybrid of remote and face-to-face learning. We pivoted in August to a full remote learning, utilizing an unfamiliar cur- curriculum platform to uh, most people who are gonna end up being using it with very little time and prep to do so. I stated in a message to families the other day that we did in a couple of weeks what would take months or even years to accomplish. Just the logistics alone in this are daunting. And then if you add to that the human element of the staff who are in the same short amount of time need to unlearn what they have had confidence in in the past, and turn around and embrace the unfamiliar and the unknown and be ready and confident in less than three days. Anyone who's ever led a group of people can imagine what that would be, kinda that task would be like. Not just the logistics, but the challenge of inspiring and motivating the people who will do the work even as the leaders themselves are burying their own doubts. Oh, and let's not forget that concurrently running with that, we have kids and families that need the same inspiration and confidence. Hopefully, you had a chance to see some of the videos that came out uh, before school started. There've been videos since school started with online families uh, from all three buildings that are helping our online families get on board. In the midst of these timelines that are constantly changing, preventing any chance for deep understanding of what they're dealing with and little time to shape or design what was needed to accomplish what I've just spoken about, without exception. I witnessed a new truth. You can lead what you don't know. And it's based on a statement that these guys have been making, which says, together we are strong. And together we can do hard things. Our time is short to give you all the play-by-play details in the weeks leading up to our August in-service days or the in-service days themselves. But I wanna go on record with you is that a building administrator with twenty-five years' experience. Number one, I've never been challenged in the way our leaders have been challenged this summer. And I'm here to tell you that based on that experience about the job and based on what I saw, you have reason to be very proud of these leaders as I am. We weren't without our hiccups, but please don't lose sight of the fact that this could have gone wrong in so many disastrous ways. Um, and it boggles the mind, but it didn't. And it's not by accident, it's by design. The optimism that our staff feel right now about what they're doing is not by accident. The hundreds of families that had contact with a real live human to help solve their problems on the first day of school was not by accident. Leadership, strong leadership, effective leadership, isn't about being in charge. It's about taking care of those who are in your charge. And that's what I saw from our building leaders. And so before I just turn it over to them to talk about that a little bit, I also wanna give a couple of really quick shout-outs. One to Jennifer Planelis. We couldn't have done it without her. Amazing what she did for our system and our kids. You're gonna hear from Matt Hunven here in a little bit. We call him our hero. And he continues every single day to be that person, the tech department, the work that they've done. The building secretaries, Lynn mentioned a couple of, I mean, we could go on and on and on. But once again, I think you've heard me say this before, I'm here to say it again. I am so impressed by the people in this district that make this district run. It's so exciting to be a part of it. And so I'd like to turn it over to our principals to give you a little bit of uh, update on what they're seeing in terms of their enrollment trends as well as maybe a snapshot of how they prepared their schools and what they've seen in the first couple of days. And we'll start with the elementary team, and I emphasize that specifically because one of the things that we saw was these four leaders come together and not treat two separate schools as separate schools, but combine these staff, combine. Cuz our online school for elementary isn't divided by school, it's elementary. And they're collaboratively and co-leading the entire process. It's very exciting. We'll start with the elementary, we'll move to the middle school, and we'll fi- uh, finish with the high school.
Alicia and I are just gonna stare at each other. So um, it has been an interesting start to the year. Um, but we have worked on some numbers to help you understand where we're at. So for O P S, we had a projected um, enrollment of five hundred and twenty-eight students. Um, and this is kindergarten through third. Preschool has a different model um, for projection. As of today, on our class lists, we have three hundred and sixty-three students. We also, even though the academy um, for elementary has both schools in it, we can go through and look which students previously attended Ording Primary. And we have fifty-six students um, that last year attended Ording Primary that are currently going to attend the academy. With seventy students, I asked Beth to run a report, um, seventy students that attended our school last year who are not attending Ording School District at all. Um, and some of those students are going to, they filed an intent to homeschool. Some of those students have moved. Um, and so I went through and started looking at name by name. We have students every year that move away. We had a student move to Montana. They had already sold their house. It had nothing to do with COVID. They've been trying to buy in Montana for years. We had um, siblings who were uh, in foster care. They were placed here. And for months, they had, the plan had been to um, reunification with their mom who's in Seattle. So there's kids in that seventy that would have happened regardless. Um, but I think it helps to understand, eighteen of those seventy had moved away. And then four had um, moved to P T R for this year. So even out of our seventy, four of those are still um, in our system, they're just not at O P S. Um, and then we have worked really hard over the last two days to make contact with every student in that three hundred and sixty number. So teachers are emailing families, inviting them to a one-on-one family connection meeting that even started before the first day. Um, reaching out to families today in between family connection meetings. We've had teachers calling families. Um, office staff calling families, and we have, we think about nine students. Um, maybe twelve that we have not had any contact with. And we're already putting a plan together to make contact, even if it means going out and knocking and saying, hi, how can we help? Um, so just really quickly, um, shout out, we have had just some absolutely amazing, amazing support. Um, and I'm gonna ask Erin to just briefly share what that's looked like.
Okay, um, first of all, coming to a new family in a new district can sometimes be a challenge. But I feel so at home here, and I wanna thank you for helping to make that transition so amazing for me. Um, our team has worked really tirelessly, and we're here representing them. But the people that are the most heroic people for me are our office ladies. They are, I mean, I can't even imagine doing any of this work without them. Liz and Beth um, are relentless in their pursuit of excellence and serving our community and serving the staff. And they have a tremendous sense of calm that comes into the office and it spreads throughout our staff. So I just wanna make sure that they, I wish I could give them more. But they receive, that they received some acknowledgement this evening.
P T R.
So P T R, we knew we're, our projected enrollment was uh, six hundred and seventy-four. Um, and we had worries about that number, honestly, beforehand. We had already made some adjustments. Um, we are down one kindergarten section. Uh, this, the staff number for that, we've reallocated, and she's going to be going to um, a special position we also had open. So we've made some adjustments internally to navigate some of that different enrollment. Um, again, I would echo what Christie and Erin talked about, about really going after every single one of our families. I think we're down to eighteen kids right now, who we don't know. But they live on a class list and we don't know where they're at right now. So we're going out for each one of our kids. We've had people calling since the, as soon as we released the survey to say, how, how can we help you? You have a question? What would that question look like? How can we get you somewhere? Families who are saying like, I don't know, this is really hard. Cool, why don't you just stick it out? At least stick it out for a week. Like, let's, we can try anything for a week. So we're trying all the creative solutions. Uh, Kristin, I know, has some shout-out she wants to do as well, so I just wanna pop that over and then pass it out to middle school.
Awesome. I do have shout-outs. I'm gonna try to keep them just to a few right now. I wanna really um, honor our elementary school teachers. All of our elementary school teachers are on, are, are conducting family communication visits or uh, c- communication nights right now. Uh, they have worked tirelessly. Um, our monitors are handing out Chromebooks. Uh, our monitors today asked if they could help make home visits and, and personally connect with those families. Uh, we've had children that have dropped off the map uh, that joined us in this meet, and they were excited. And it was wonderful to see them. So we're proud of our staff, we're proud of our students. We are lucky.
O M S.
So at the middle, I think um one of the things Steve kind of alluded it to, alluded to it at the beginning is the idea of energy. So I actually missed uh the kickoff days because of the medical event, um Kevin took over. Um and we had already kind of executed our plan for um. The three days of professional learning and preparation and you know, I kind of tried to have uh something ready to go on Tuesday or. Yeah, Tuesday, no, Wednesday morning uh before the whole staff. Um just cuz I felt one of my staff, you know what, I just had to get out of the way, it was like trying to hold back a hot ride. Um they were ready to go and they didn't want anything to do with us, they wanted to get in front of kids and. Um that's been beautiful to see because as Kevin and I walked through um. The building and then visited uh electronic classrooms, the kids were there, they were excited, they were showing off their dogs, they were happy to be. Um reconnected with their peers, um it's been the energy of getting our families back together and our kids. Back together has been one of the most rewarding pieces of this and we've done it frankly by the skin of our teeth. Um we, because of uh needing to move some staff to the online academy, we rebuilt our master schedule on Monday. My counseling team, that's unheard of, Matt, a twenty-year veteran counselor said. You guys are insane to do that and um we got pulled off in forty-eight hours. Our entire master schedule, uh and today I think it's really important uh when we get to the numbers. Um to recognize the difference between accounting and um metrics, because our accounting is great. Um my numbers match Marcy's numbers and everything is lined up, but it does mean that um. We're actually, I feel really positive about where we're at, I've got twenty-three um students that I haven't seen or tracked down yet. Um and so my classified staff are starting phone banking tomorrow and we're headed out into the neighborhoods on Tuesday, door knocking. With supplies and Chromebooks and food and everything else that it's gonna take to engage those kids, so. We're really pleased by the result um that we didn't have the let-off um that we feared. And are really down to twenty-three kids that we need to track down, so that's the update from OMS.
Steve is very kind to us, it's very easy to lead when um you have amazing staff and we have an amazing village that has our backs, so that. Allows us to do the best work possible, so uh the credit goes to all the people that are doing hard work. Inside the schools and backing us up outside the schools and delivering their kids online, so. Uh the high school has. Some really positive stuff to report, um I'm happy to report that we have the best attendance we've ever had since I've been in the high school. Um we have less than fifty students who are absent to their meets, who are not showing up to school per day. I've never seen that in brick and mortar, so we have more kids showing up on the computer than we have in actual school. Um all told, we have about seventeen students who I haven't come to a meet or who have not contacted us to have two-way communication about such a technological struggle, but are planning to come. Um we have about fourteen full-time running start students and thirty some students who are part-time, so as Marcy alluded to earlier, our running start numbers are down. Which means the higher FTE count in that area for the high school. Um so far, we have about seven hundred and fifteen students who are attending their meets at the high school. And we have over a hundred and forty students on the online academy. Um with about thirty of those students being a hybrid model that we're building for them at the MEC. So all told, we're probably well over a hundred projection for the high school, um I think a lot of that has to do with. You know, in fact, you have to have credits and and do the walk-throughs graduation, so there's definitely some pull for that, uh to get your. You know, get your tablet from the computer. Um the teachers, as as we went through, Matt and I were able to visit every single class, which was cool, we've never been able to do that at the start of the school year, we know it's split in half. We were able to pop into each class and I was really buoyed by uh the energy of both the staff and the students, students were very talkative, interactive. Teachers were just in their game and I I think everyone, everyone has been waiting on on big brass to get back to. Some sort of normal and and see each other, so that that made me borderline teary uh to see that. So far, I'm aware of about seven withdrawals from the high school and about thirty new students. Uh so that's a good trend that we're seeing, I think it matches what Chris is seeing to the number of students who are uh choi- choicing out. Um those students are choosing to stay in Ording, so that that's good news. Uh short of that, um I want to. Give my last bit of time to Matt Crossman, who's gonna give a couple of public shout outs to some well-deserving people.
Thank you Cliff, uh yeah, I just want to say uh there's some folks that in the month of August stepped up in such a huge way. That we would not be here tonight where we are without them and the first and foremost is our multimedia tech classified staff member Gary Ann Frye. Uh we worked five to eight, four to seven, made a schedule, we had evening events for Chromebook distribution. We're, we're just shy right now, I think around six hundred Chromebooks have been distributed at the high school alone. Uh to families in our community and and this woman is, has worked as a tireless champion, you heard about Jennifer Plonellis, I don't think she's rested. Since June twenty-first, I honestly don't think she's taken a day off to support not just the high school, but our K-12 system. And it's incredible work that she has done at the teacher level to support an entire system that will be behind the scenes, unheralded. Uh but will, has kept our FTE up, is doing amazing work and got a lot of keys to iron out, but she's gonna, she's gonna be a champion. And then last but not least is our counseling staff, Kim Strasberg, our registrar. Um these guys have been adjusting and pivoting daily with us through the month of August to get where we're at right now. Uh and and some of the work they had to do, we had to pull them back out of vacation early. Uh and Kurt Dave alluded to his counseling team at the middle school and just the work that they do, so um. Uh the the highlight of my day in the last two days. Undoubtedly, it's been walking into a classroom meet and seeing the smiles on kids' faces, because they're so hungry. To connect with human beings, even if it's virtually. They miss school and they miss their friends and they miss their teachers and I saw the last two days, the power of what education brings to a community like Ording. And I'll leave you with that, that we're, we're rocking, we're alive, we're healthy and we're kicking and we're gonna make it through this year, there's no doubt, we got the right people doing the work.
To you Tony.
Well, I feel the love, I feel the energy and I feel the passion. That has been demonstrated not only just tonight, but throughout the last five months of really tough work. I'm proud of our building administrators, our central office leadership, our support team throughout the district. Done a fantastic job under very unpleasant, difficult and new challenges that we've never encountered before. We're gonna get better, we're gonna be getting better at this and uh. Uh let them throw the next thing at us, we'll take it, we'll, we'll tackle it, we'll take it down to the ground. Uh but uh as they say, bring it on, we will take it on and do the best job possible, so. Uh thank you everyone for uh spending the time to present tonight. Uh Steve, I think we have Matt uh giving a short presentation here on the uh. Uh contacts that we've had with the Ording Express, so anything you'd like to add there?
Yeah, let's hear from the hero.
Thank you Steve, thank you Tony, I, I wouldn't say that I'm a hero, I'm just, I just like to be the guy in the background. Trying to help make things work and help as many people as I can, um and and I couldn't do it alone, I couldn't do it without uh my tech. Uh having an amazing team, I I really do, I I have to say that, they step up every single day to, to help me. Uh I mean, every problem that gets thrown at us, there is always one of them to jump in and lend a hand to just make it work, so. Um it it's been incredible, it's been, the last couple of days have been really tough, uh but I I think. We were able to talk to over chat, text, um email and Facebook. Over two hundred and twenty families that needed help on the first day of school. And that was uh in including, you know, Gary Ann Frye was helping along with uh Jody Leonard um and Michaela Kaling. And so on the first day and and it was tough because we did have some glitches that we had to work out. Uh but, but we got it all working and it was awesome to actually see these families or hear them. Where you know, they're struggling, they're so stressed, so frustrated and when we fix their problem and they actually log into the Chromebook and actually are able to start their classes. Was just awesome, so um I know that, I'm gonna kind of share a little bit about the Ording Express, but I just wanted to say that to begin with because it. You know, it was pretty amazing, um and also we have a filter system that allows us to kind of see how many kids are logging in and filter all their stuff. And to see well over two thousand kids that or actually concurrent connections of over two thousand people, it was amazing. It was awesome to see these kids, but I can actually see the kids are engaging, so that was pretty cool. Um I'm gonna drop the end of the chat, I'm gonna drop the Ording Express uh link, just so if you want to follow along there, I'm gonna kind of go through it for just a couple of minutes. But I wanted to just drop that in the link so you could look at it. Um and I I will share it on my screen, but it might be a little bit smaller, so um let me present this real quick. Here we go. And and again, this, I want to thank Tony on this, because the, the Ording Express was really his idea and um. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have been where we're at without it, I mean, I I can't imagine those hundreds of families trying to get assistance. And not being able to just reach out to a chat or a phone call or or uh send an email over to us or be able to send a text message. Um so I really want to say thank you to Tony, just to hit that idea, I was able to take it and get some, you know, run with it a little bit and. So uh that that's been amazing. Uh so the Ording Express, if you look at the page here, we, obviously it's it's where you go when you want to know. Um and and really, that's ac- absolutely the truth, I can't tell you how many families said, we came to the site and we were able to. Get the information we needed to uh to get started in school. So first off, we had the, the Ording Express, the call center, um which was staffed by, you know, my tech plus the uh Jody Leonard and. Uh Michaela Kaling and uh uh Gary Ann Frye and um it was awesome and just the first day, just the phone and the. The chats were just, it was the phone was ringing off the hook, we had more chats than we could, we could access, we'd have to tell them, be patient for a minute, we'll, someone will contact you. Or we'll jump into the chat with you, um but uh this has been just a uh. Just a great place to go and get instant help. And if at any point you guys have any questions about it or you have any comments and you want to uh share something you think would be helpful, make it better. I am always open to to making this site as as the best we can. Uh so first, we just have some videos that will, are are really easy for students to watch and and get some information on the, how to navigate. Uh Google Classroom, how to navigate getting into Clever, which is the single sign-on that we use for allowing kids to get into not only their Chromebook. But into uh Edgenuity, um and into some of the other programs that the teachers use. And then we just give updates here, I know we kind of like a bu- a bulletin board almost, um a place where they can get updates if. And and tech can put in there if there's an issue, um as you can see here, this is something we're experiencing yesterday and a little bit this morning. Um just with the logins and allowing kids to uh to get on here and get an instant fix for their problem. And then we've had a a a lot of teachers have been putting in their, their tech tickets and and they can, to get help with their, themselves. Uh with their classrooms as well as their students, um and so we have a ticket system um that they can go to, fill it out real quick. And and one of our texts will jump on it and get it taken care of. Along the side here, I kind of just went down pretty quick, along the side, we have a bunch of other links uh that will help. Get families the information they need, be it uh Skyward Access information or a a formula for the student to figure out their login. Uh username and password, um so that they can get logged into their Chromebook. Uh also the same thing with Clever, uh if they're having any issues with Clever and just, just understanding and navigating. Uh how to use these brand-new technologies they've never had to use before because they weren't uh online, uh it wasn't a hundred, you know. Mostly online or a hundred percent online learning, so um. Scroll back down here a little bit. And then we have the ta- uh teacher and staff report, and I know a a lot of you have probably already seen this at our kickoff, but um for those that haven't seen this, this is. A uh a link to each one of the schools, um to the teachers' webpages, which allows students to get. Um the email information for the dr- their teacher directly, so if they're having an issue with uh whatever uh class. Work, um they could absolutely email their teacher directly and get a a response. Uh as well as they can contact central office or or district staff. Or if they really just need information right away, they can jump right in the chat, and I know you don't see the chat here right now, we have hours set for the chat, but in the right-hand corner there at the bottom. Uh if you come to this page between uh eight in the morning and uh three thirty, you will see a chat there that's available for you to jump on and chat with. One of our uh uh help associates. And then for counseling, we've, we've added in this section for counseling, uh so that if they need, someone needs help getting uh. A counselor, they, here's their contact information, their email address and their phone numbers. As well as resources that are outside of the Ording for, school, Ording School District, so um for instance, if you need help uh. Getting here, I'm gonna open it up just so you guys can see it and I'm hoping you can see that. Um that just popped up, that's the, that is our link to getting uh high-speed internet, I'm sorry, here's a list of the links so you can see. Um and I don't know if you're able to see that there with me, because it might be a different window, um but basically just uh resources for like the. Ording Family Support Center, uh the Adams Family Street, the Family Shelter in Tacoma. Um just a number of, the Ording Food Bank, a number of different resources that are outside of the school district that will help families i- in a myriad of ways. Uh just navigating the the COVID uh and the, the struggles that come with that. So. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, just awesome job, I love seeing all of this come together and. Um it's a level of communication that is so far above and beyond what we've done in the past. And yet when I see it, I'm like, I wish we'd been doing that all along, but I think this is what the community and our families and our students. Um really need, and so I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the creativity and just this, just the day-to-day support for making this happen. Great job.
Thank you and and thank you Tony again, like I said, this, this wouldn't have taken off without him, so.
Uh under Matt's leadership, we're going to see improvements being made, we're gonna reach out to people, as I've said before. Uh people will be making suggestions on way, how we can improve it and uh this is just the beginning of something that's gonna be. Really, really useful, we believe, for all the members of our community, and so we're excited about it and. And if as board members, someone comes to you and says, you know, I need some more information on such and such. Guide them to the Ording Express, it's where you go when you want to know.
Definitely. And administrators, I I just want to thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate the verbal reports because we were so br- we. Worried about having a meeting tonight, when you're at the thick of it and still trying to make those amazing things happen. And thanks for taking the time to talk with us tonight, we really appreciate it and. Had the unique opportunity of observing Alex's first day of online learning at school. And while he was mortified to have me in the background, I did sit out of camera shot. But I wanted to tell you, his first, his first period teacher was so into it and had all the technology popping and they were commenting and asking questions. And then his second period teacher was like, I've got some pictures to show you and held up printed eight by ten photos in front of the camera. And I just loved the, the contrast and it was just as special in both ways. And so I know we've got a bunch of teachers out there improvising and making it work for their kids and I just, I love it, so thank you.
Well, and we didn't even, we didn't even spend any time talking about how intentional the buildings were in planning the first two weeks. Cause we talked about, uh we talked about a really intentional and thoughtful opening for the first two weeks and so. Those first two, these first two weeks of school are designed to prepare students and families for the online learning. With the tools, with the protocols, with the norms, with talking about kids and their social emotional health. Uh study, study spaces and practices and they've mapped it all out for two weeks so that.
Awesome.
Every single kid that's uh either in the remote, in the remote situation are getting the materials and the supports that they need.
Sounds great, I can't wait.
Well, I just want to say thank you guys, you all should take a bow because you've done a great job, great job. I see, I can see why they say, Ording, small, big, was it big view, small community, whatever, but as a community. You guys have done a great job, we're all gonna get that little hug, because you've done an excellent job. So you went through tries and triplets and you have done it, so let's move forward and continue the year. So you went through tries and triplets and you have done it. So let's move forward and continue the year. Thanks for the service.
Thank you.
I gotta ask a question. I was going to propose we move the board comments in front of the executive session, but it seems like we've gone right into that now. So can I just give a board comment now or can we just do that before? Cause I'd like to give it to the
Sure, you can. Go ahead.
I just wanna say thank you. We, it's obvious that you have your staffs back, you have our kids is back and you have our families back. And I think that's fantastic. I think that's where you need to be focusing. I know, you know, as, as we saw earlier, Marcy's kinda stressing the budget and what it might be. Um, I only speak as one board member, but if you guys focus on having the kids and the staff and the family, I'm sure the board will look at ways to try to have your back. And I, I think that's, personally I can commit to, that we'll find creative ways to lessen the blow whenever we can. Uh, so just focus on what's important and that's the kids and the staff. Now focus on that. Leave the rest to those resters who focus on that.
And, and piggyback on George's comment, we will have your back.
We will have your back.
Thank you.
We do have your back. Absolutely. Well done. Who knows?
Thank all of you for spending your evening with us. I appreciate it. God bless. And we're gonna move on to next, next item on the agenda.
Thanks, y'all.
It'll be the minimum basic education requirement. Steve?
Yeah, you have the report in front of you. It just needs to be, uh, as you've reviewed it. We just need you to acknowledge, uh, from the board and, uh, your signature will then be uploaded to OSPI, uh, to acknowledge that the report is accurate and complete and truthful.
Any questions or comments? Do we need a motion on this, Bonnie?
We do need a motion. Thank you. Motion to approve the minimum basic education requirement compliance for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Second, with first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next on the agenda is, uh, executive session to discuss, uh, employment issues, uh, with ten, fifteen minutes. How long we need, guys? Hey, Tony, how, how long we think we need? I think they'll probably need about twenty to twenty-five minutes. Okay. We'll go into exec- executive session for twenty to twenty-five minutes. We'll come out with no, uh, comments and we'll just adjourn the meeting. So let's go into executive session. Thank you. Thank you. Thank all of you.